Good morning. I will now call to order the October 6, 2021, Clackamas County Board of Commissioners Land Use Hearing. Mary, please take attendance.
Commissioner Fisher?
Here.
Commissioner Scholl?
Here.
Commissioner Savis?
Here.
Commissioner Smith or Chair Smith?
Here. All are here, except Commissioner Schrader is at a national conference representing the Board of County Commissioners, of which we're very happy about that. All rise. I will now lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Good morning, everyone. We are holding this meeting in person and virtually. If you've joined us via Zoom for this meeting or interested in providing public comment, we will prompt you regarding how to do that when the time is right. The Zoom link and instructions to participate are located at clackamas.us/meetings/bcc/landuse. The easy way is just to go to Clackamas Meetings. Today, we will consider ZDO-277, a proposed legislative text amendment to the Clackamas County Comprehensive Plan and Zoning and Development Ordinance that is intended to provide zoning opportunities to address housing shortage issues in unincorporated Clackamas County. Three changes have been recommended by Planning Commission and staff. Each change will be considered and voted on separately. General public comment will be taken at the usual allotted time. As always, the public is welcome to sign up to testify. For those attending in person, please fill out a green card and give it to Mary, and you will be called on to provide your testimony at the appropriate time. When you are called on, be sure to include your name and the area where you live. I would like to remind all participants, including staff, all elected officials, and members of the public, that Robert's Rules of Orders will be enforced during this meeting. The hearing on ZDO-277 will proceed as follows. Number one, we will first hear a presentation from Principal Planner Martha Fritzi and Long Range Planning Manager Karen Burig. Next, I will open the public hearing for testimony, beginning with public officials, who will have five minutes each. Then representatives from recognized community planning organizations and agencies will have three minutes each. Finally, others wishing to testify will have three minutes each. The Board then will deliberate and either render a decision today or set a time at a later date. Assisting us in this hearing today is our Clerk Mary Bork, right over here, Planners Martha Fritzi and Karen Burig, right there, and Assistant County Council Nate Boderman. What I intend to do in this hearing today is have all information presented from our staff. Then the Board will deliberate singly on each item as presented in the packet. Nate, I believe you're up.
Actually, we don't have any legal statements that we need to make today, so we can go straight to the staff presentation.
That would be Martha Fritzi, is that correct? And Karen Burig, please come up.
Correct.
Is this on? Can we... Are they doing the...
Are you asking for the screen again?
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, that's fine.
All right, maybe I'll wait till... Wonderful. So, good morning, Commissioners. It is very good to be with you today at this Board Hearing, where actions will be taken related to the first phase of the Land Use Housing Strategies Project. It was two years ago, in September of 2019, that staff facilitated a joint discussion between the Planning Commission and the Board about actions that are needed to increase the amount of housing available across the full spectrum of the housing continuum. At that time, information was being developed in a variety of venues and committees, including the 2019 Homeless Point in Time Account, the Clackamas County Housing Needs Assessment, the Housing Affordability and Homelessness Task Force, as well as work on the Housing Bill 2001, the Missing Middle Housing. So, the Clackamas County Housing Needs Analysis, which was completed in 2019 at the direction of the Clackamas County Coordinating Committee, C4, the Board of County Commissioners, and county administration specifically concluded that there was a need to create additional capacity for nearing 5,000 new dwelling units, across the spectrum of dwelling types and in different zoning categories. The greatest need was for places of medium and high-density residential units. So, in February of 2020, staff brought forward an issue paper, which specifically discussed the housing strategies related to the Comprehensive Plan and Zoning Development Ordinance. And it provided, that issue paper provided, a full background of the issue and included 12 possible strategies for amending the land use regulations in support of housing in urban, unincorporated Clackamas County. So, at that time, the Board gave direction to address 10 of those 12 strategies. Today's hearing on the ZDO amendments is the first phase of that project, which focuses on three specific strategies. The remaining strategies will be addressed in future phases of the project. So, before I hand it over, hand the presentation over to Martha Fritzi, who is the Principal Planner, as well as the Project Manager, I wanted to highlight that these proposed changes in the Zoning Development Ordinance are being discussed today because they were brought forward directly from the recommendations of the Housing Affordability and Homelessness Task Force. The Task Force was appointed by the Board in 2018 and was asked to specifically identify actions the county could take to address housing affordability issues. So, the proposed changes in the ZDO that are before you today were identified by that Task Force as Tier One recommendations, those being the most, those being the items most likely to affect change in the shortest period of time. So, with that introduction, Martha will lead the presentation about the specific recommended changes to the ZDO that are included as a part of today's hearing.
Thank you, Karen. And before I start, I will draw your attention to the fact that I put four pieces of paper in front of you. Those represent Exhibits 5 through H, which is testimony that had been received since the Planning Commission pack, I'm sorry, the Board, your Board Packet was posted last Wednesday. You may have already seen some of these via email, but I wanted to make sure that everybody had the opportunity to read these, so that's what is in front of you. So, thank you. I'm Martha Fritzi, Principal Planner, at the Planning and Zoning Division. As noted by Karen, we're here to talk about ZDO 277. Can you go to the next slide, please? Thank you. Which are legislative text amendments to our Zoning and Development Code and our Comprehensive Plan to implement Phase One of our Land Use Housing Strategies Project. And specific amendments are to the three Zoning Development Ordinance sections listed up there, as well as some enabling amendments to Chapters 5 and 6 in our Comprehensive Plan. All of these amendments are in your packet, redlined to indicate what the changes are that are being proposed. Next slide. The purpose of all of these changes is to, to start to provide more opportunities to help alleviate the housing shortage and the housing affordability issues in unincorporated Clackamas County. And specifically, the proposed changes would implement the following three strategies: increasing the Affordable Housing Density Bonus, what I call right-sizing multifamily parking requirements, I'm sure we'll talk a lot about that today, and also increasing the allowed housing density in certain commercial zones. And, you know, as Karen noted, these, these three strategies came specifically out of recommendations from the Housing Affordability and Homelessness Task Force, and also are supported by the Housing Needs Analysis that was completed a couple of years ago. And it's important to keep in mind that they also were developed to support the Board's Performance Clackamas Goals for finding places for, in the urban area, for, for more housing that is affordable to lower-income households. Next slide, please. So, a couple of things to keep in mind as we're talking about this today. We know through, in this larger Housing Strategies Project, that no single strategy is going to solve the county's housing problem. What we are trying to do is, is find ways to start moving the needle. And so, each of these strategies provides an opportunity both for property owners and developers to start moving the needle in the right direction. It's also important to keep in mind that each of these strategies is independent, and I think, as Chair Smith indicated, they will be discussed and decided upon separately. They are tied together in a way, which is why we had packaged them together. You know, the amount of, the amount of parking that is required is, is directly related to how much density could fit on a property. But at the end of the day, each of these strategies and the amendments that are required to implement each are separate items and do not have to go together. It is not an all or nothing. The Board can approve all, some or none of these strategies, or all, some or none of the, or all or some of these strategies with additional amendments that the Board would like to see. Next slide, please. We've all seen this map before. I just wanted to put it up there again to remind everybody. So, the first two strategies that we're talking about today, the Affordable Housing Bonus and the Multifamily Parking Requirements, this is the unincorporated urban area in red that would be affected by those strategies. Those are the areas that allow for multifamily housing. Next slide. So, let's talk about this. So, the Affordable Housing Density Bonus, and we have seen this slide before. What is an Affordable Housing Density Bonus? Well, that is where a developer is allowed to build more units on a lot than otherwise would have been allowed if they agree to provide some affordable housing. And the county's current Affordable Housing Density Bonus is minimal and pretty ineffective, and, to our knowledge, has never or very rarely been used. It currently allows an 8% increase over the base density if a developer agrees to provide some affordable units. The proposal here today is to increase that allowed bonus to 50% of the base density. So, in other words, if a developer is allowed on their site to build 100 units, but they propose to provide affordable housing to at least half of those units, they will get 50 more units on that site, assuming, of course, they can meet all of the other development criteria that's required of them, including setbacks, landscaping, parking, et cetera. It doesn't waive any of these other, the Affordable Housing Density Bonus does not waive any of these other development standards. And so, these changes are found in Section 1012 of the Zoning and Development Ordinance. And a couple of, a couple of specifics about these changes, one is that the proposal would provide this Affordable Housing Density Bonus for developers providing housing for households earning 80% or below the area's median income. The current language is a little unclear in the zoning code, what that income level is, so we are proposing to specify the income level 80% or below. And that housing has to maintain that affordability level for 30 years. And so, those two specific inclusions have been put in there. This is similar to what a number of other jurisdictions in Oregon do. Early on in this project, we had done a lot of research about what other jurisdictions in Oregon and outside Oregon do related to, to all of these various strategies. And so, we have landed on this 50% Affordable Housing Density Bonus. Next slide. So, parking. I mentioned I call this right-size multifamily parking. So, the proposed amendments to the zoning code would include the, would result in the numbers that are, are up on the table, but before we talk about the numbers, I just want to talk about a couple of things. One is that currently, excuse me, our zoning code has one parking ratio for multifamily dwellings, and it's the parking ratio on the left. It varies by the number of bedrooms provided, but that's it. There's no opportunity in our zoning code to vary from that. In the past, if a developer has been building specifically affordable housing, they have had to come in front of the Board and specifically request a reduction. And so, there is not any flexibility right now in our zoning code, and that's one thing that we are trying to remedy with this. The, the proposal that's in front of you is based on a number of things. It is based on data and research, from research that was conducted early on in this project, and specifically data about actual parking usage in various locations by very, in developments that serve various populations. It's based on actually driving around and looking at some of the housing projects in Clackamas County that have been approved with a reduced, with a slightly reduced parking ratio, and looking at the parking lots. And I think that there are a few other things to keep in mind. One is that this is a minimum requirement. If a developer feels the need to provide more, there is not a maximum a developer could. And also, I think that a couple of things that you need to keep in mind are that parking is expensive, parking can be very expensive to build, and, to a large extent, realizing an increase in density needs to be, be, will only be realized if the developer can afford to build the parking. And in Clackamas County, that generally means not building structured parking, it means building surface parking. And so, staff worked hard with the data, with community outreach, to find a balance that was the right size for multifamily parking. And the result is this proposal that's up here in front of you. Specifically, in Section 1015 of our zoning code, the proposal would be to chain to reduce the minimum required parking by .25 spaces per unit for any multifamily development, and that's that second column that you see. And then, it also would add an allowance for an additional 20% reduction for any units that are affordable to households earning 60% of the area's median income. And again, that affordability has to be maintained for 30 years. And also, would allow for a 40% reduction for units that are affordable at or below 30% of the area's median income, or any units that are within a quarter-mile walking distance from a light rail station. So, that is the proposal in front of you, and I expect this will generate a certain, quite a bit of conversation. So, I'm happy to answer more questions about that when we get to that point in the hearing. Can we, next slide, please? And so, the final strategy that I'm talking about, the final set of code amendments, would affect a smaller subset of the properties that were identified in that first map. And these are the properties in four commercial zones in the urban area that currently do allow for multifamily housing, but the density is capped, the maximum density would be 25 units per acre in these zones if somebody were to build housing, with or without commercial development, it doesn't matter. And can you go to the next slide, please? And so, we've all seen this picture before, but I like to remind people sort of what, to be able to visualize sort of what this looks like. And on the left is a multifamily development in Clackamas County that is built around, at, at or around 25 dwelling units an acre. The development form looks, you know, typically is a three-story walk-up type apartment building. The proposal would be to increase the allowed density in those commercial zones that were identified in that map, up to 60 dwelling units an acre, which could look something more like the pictures on the right. The top one being a mixed-use development with some ground floor commercial, the bottom one being an actual apartment building that was constructed close to the Fuller Road Light Rail Station, it's on Addy Road and 205. And that's, that's not 60 units an acre, that's probably about 40, 48 units an acre in that picture there. And that is in Clackamas County. So, I think it's important to note that the proposed amendments do not include any changes to commercial uses that are allowed in these zones. All the same commercial uses would still be allowed. The same commercial uses could be built in conjunction with housing or not. There's no requirement about what, about what needs to be put on the property, it would just allow for more dwelling units, again, assuming that the development could meet all of the other development standards, parking, landscaping, setbacks, et cetera. The one, one thing that staff has added, based on some conversations both with the Board and with other members of the community, is, is an incentive to, for a developer to build mixed use rather than just housing. And so, that incentive is in the form of an additional housing density bonus of 20% if the housing is built in conjunction with commercial uses or non-residential uses on the property. That is something that was specifically requested and by the Home Builders Association, for one, and something that we put in there to hope to incentivize the form of development, really, that looks more like the above picture rather than the below, and also to encourage this mix of uses for more walkable areas when you're building a higher-density housing. Next slide, please. So, I'm just about done. Of course, we couldn't have a land use hearing without talking about analysis and findings, and I'm really not going to go into any detail. There is a lot of detail in your packet, outlined in the Planning Commission's Staff Report. All of the applicable criteria, policies, and plans are listed up there, and staff, through that analysis that's detailed, has found that these proposals are compliant with all of those applicable standards. Next slide, please. And I'm happy to answer specific questions about those if you have them. So, we did take this proposal to the Planning Commission. They held a public hearing on August 23. There were four parties there that testified, generally in support, there was no opposition at that time. There were a couple of what I call significant issues, really, the big discussion items were around parking. There was understandably concern among some of the Planning Commissioners about implications of reducing parking, about potential spillover into neighborhoods, things that we all have grappled with in this room, in every conversation that we've had about this. There was a pretty extensive conversation about the density bonus for mixed-use development, the reason being, at the time, the way the draft was written, the mixed-use bonus would only apply to mixed-use development in the same building. And, and the, you'll see in Exhibit 2 in your packet, the Home Builders Association and Portland Metro Association of Realtors has specifically requested a change to that bonus for it to apply not only if the mixed use was built in the same building, but if it was built on the same site in separate buildings. That change has been made, and it's reflected in the code amendments that you have in your packet for today's hearing. And then, the final one is interesting, it really doesn't have to do with the zoning code amendments, well, it doesn't, it's not something to be written into our zoning code, but there was an interest among the Planning Commission of, of the planning staff developing some metrics to really understand, you know, four, five, six years down the road, if this was effective, if these changes, if they are approved, if these changes really had the desired effect. And I think that's actually a very interesting idea, and staff is working on, if this is approved, staff will work on developing some, some sort of report-back mechanism to really try to understand whether or not these changes were effective. And so, at the end of the day, the Planning Commission did recommend approval of all of the items included in ZDO 277. They also split it into three, three discussions and motions. Both the Affordable Housing Bonus and the increase in housing density in commercial zones was a unanimous vote to recommend approval. Parking, as you can see up there, was 5-3, five to recommend approval and three to not. Next slide, please. And then, finally, staff's recommendation is to approve the ZDO 277 text amendments as drafted. Again, this does include the amendments recommended by the Planning Commission, which were the mixed use, I'm sorry, the mixed-use bonus to apply to the whole site rather than just to a building. And then, if the Board is to approve, were to approve this today, then do a direct staff to draft an ordinance for adoption at a future business meeting. And that, I think there's one more slide, but I think it says questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Martha Fritzi and Karen Burig. We will now entertain Commissioners' comments, and we will also have another opportunity for Commissioners to weigh in before each consideration. Commissioner Savis, you're up.
Yeah. Well, thank you, Martha, for the presentation. I just want to just give a little bit of introduction as to where I'm coming from. So, in 2005, '06, and '07, I sat on MPAC, Metro's MPAC, Metro Policy Advisory Committee on land use. And in that period of time, you know, TODs were, transportation-oriented developments were being promoted, and I, and number of other numbers and statistics, metrics were in place, transit, cost of housing at the time, the average family wage income, and that intersection, which was obviously being realized today, and that is a greater propensity at the time for, for more poverty, unfortunately, and frankly homelessness, and that has come true, unfortunately, far greater than we anticipated back 15, 16, or 10, 12, 13, 14 years ago. So, with that said, when those were happening, those discussions were happening, I was driving around and seeing these examples of where these densities, TODs, were happening and so forth, and really studying. So, every weekend, whether it was a Saturday or Sunday, usually Sunday, I would drive to some of these areas and, and look at them, sometimes knock on doors, talk to people, how's it working out, what do you think, so on. So, that, I'm coming from that depth of background. Since that time, obviously, in my role here as a county commissioner, transit has been an important element in these types of high-density developments. Sidewalks, the basic, for a walkable community, you need sidewalks, you need a walkable community, you need ideally a grid structure. A lot of services are in place. And the transit level, the, call it the transit service level, in a lot of these areas where successfull is high, and where it's not so successful, it's very low, and you see a lot of cars, and you see a lot of problems and conflicts. So, listening here recently to some of the input I've heard on this proposal for the last couple, three months, transit comes up, walkable communities comes up, I totally understand the need to incent development, and I understand how all this ties together. But what's unique to us compared to these other places is, there's not a lot of investment in Clackamas County with transit. So, that's, that, to me, is, is an important element. It was an easy decision, well, there was a year ago, I think it was last year, where we, or maybe it was earlier this year, when we looked at the Fuller Road Station project nearby there and waived the parking using the emergency ordinance at the time. And that was easy because there was a lot of transit, it's pretty flat and walkable in that area, and even increasingly so, more sidewalks, a lot of minis have been put in place, and, and they will be put in place. put in place, and and they will be put in place. So services are nearby, all the elements are nearby to make that successful. In certain areas of the county that are outlined in the red on these maps, that's not such the case, you know, exclusively. There's areas where there's tremendous amount of either sidewalk deficiency, services, basic elements, walkability, transit, and so on. So I'm, I don't know how we can responsibly, unilaterally give these parking allowances and be mindful that, you know, developer's responsible for what happens there. But when it comes to those basic services, transit, drainage, sidewalks, all those other elements, walkable community streets, roads, side roads, that's government's responsibility. And there's no requirement for government to step up their game. And those investments need to be made. But, you know, I'm still working, been five, six years, still trying to work with TriMet on solving the parking issue at Park Avenue, because on day one, that thing opened, the first business day on Monday, that parking structure was full and overflowing into the area. So we already have some challenges in certain areas. So I'm looking for a mechanism that can somehow factor in current conditions in a proposed development in the future that say, hey, it could work here, and and let's greenlight it. Or maybe it doesn't work there. What can we do? And maybe we can change that. So I'm looking for some flexibility in that that is realistic and something that the development community can also rely upon, so they can, again, be incented to to move forward. So I do have one question. Maybe Karen might be the best person to answer that. Is there standardized?
Come up, Karen, please.
Yeah, thank you. Is there a standardized, let's just say the region for that, of levels of service when it comes to transit and walkability, the structure, the grid structure, so people can actually, you know, is there is there a measurement, like a level three, four? I mean, is there some kind of metric that is universal in our area?
So while there isn't a standard metric for a specific level of service, there's different frequency amounts that provide for better levels of service, if that makes sense. So like 15-minute frequent service is considered one of the higher levels of service for a typical bus transit. And then it moves up to a higher level of service if you're around, let's say, light rail. Does that help your answer? So really, we're looking at those areas where we have 15-minute service as areas that have the best level of service here in Clackamas County.
Yeah. For the edification of my colleagues, can you talk about all the things that factor into walking scores?
Well, so walking scores are actually kind of a private sector type of tool that's used to help to describe a community. Often, you'll see it when when people are purchasing homes or whatnot. So I I don't have all the information on exactly what's taken into account with regards to walking scores, but I do know that they look at availability of services, different commercial uses in the area, and how close they are together. They also do look at transit availability and sidewalks. But I imagine there's more, it's kind of a more complex tool than just that.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, Karen. And I'm just going to close with this. In the areas where, you know, Imola County, more on the east side, in DeGresham and that area, I've seen where there's not a lot of the infrastructure. It looks a lot like Clackamas County. You know, granted, they have better transit service than we do, but it looks a lot like when it comes to incomplete sidewalk systems, very little parking, very little services around there. I've seen where those developments have really created a lot of hardship and chaos, and from talking to the residents nearby, there's been some substantial, and safety issues as well. So I don't want to see situations like that in Clackamas County where it's gone really, really wrong, and somehow figure out a way we can we can incent areas where it's going to be successful, and everyone is a win-win-win for everyone. Those are my comments for now. I'd love to hear from everyone else.
Commissioner Shaw, you're up.
Yes, good morning, and thank you, Karen and Martha. And thank you, Planning Commission, for all your work on this. This is a very important decision to be made today because it's going to impact the housing of the future, and we need that housing built. I have heard no complaints from constituents regarding higher density. The only complaints I've heard and concerns I've heard have to do with parking. I realize that if a developer is going to go to 60 units per acre, there's got to be some, some consideration for reduced parking. That kind of density without some reduced parking might be difficult. But what that, the current recommendation for reductions in the parking spaces, that's drawing a lot of concern in the county. So today, I support the two portions of the zoning, the ordinance change regarding density. I've got concerns about the current recommendations for parking. Again, I understand that there's got to be some reduction, but I'm not convinced today what that is.
Thank you, commissioners. We will proceed. We will have more opportunity to give comment right now. I will open the public testimony for this item and begin with public officials. Are there any public officials here or online, Mary, that wish to testify?
Chair, I'll have to reach out to the attendees. I'm not sure if we have public officials online. If there are any public officials online, please indicate so by raising your hand. It looks like
Thank you, Mary.
We have
Okay.
We have none.
Okay. I will now entertain testimony from representatives from any CPOs or agencies who wish to testify. Mary, do we see anybody online that fits that general category?
Attendees, if you could please indicate if you are a, let me take a look here. Let's see here. See nothing. If you're a, I'm looking for this in the agenda, a CPO or agency that wishes to testify, if you could please, attendees, let us know. Chair, does not look like we have anybody.
Mary, do we have anybody online?
We have 17 attendees, Chair.
Okey-dokey.
Yes.
So what we're going to do is we're now going to entertain testimony from any other organization or the public. We do have one person in attendance. She has filled out a green card. Roseanne Johnson, would you please come forward? Give us your name, your organization, and you have time today.
Good morning. Am I on the mic?
Yes.
Okay, a little bit closer. Good morning, Commissioners, Chair Smith. My name is Roseanne Johnson. I work in the Government Affairs Department for the Home Builders Association of Metropolitan Portland. The address is on the green card, but it's in unincorporated Clackamas County. Like us, we go address. Together with the Portland Metro Association of Realtors and and HBA, on behalf of these two organizations, we did submit a letter that will be in the record. And we wholeheartedly support all three of the recommendations in addition to the Planning Commission's amendment that was approved last month, or excuse me, in August. HBA was a member of the Housing and Affordability and Homelessness Task Force that began in 2019, and the and the resulting, what became the Phase One Housing Strategies Project Task Force as well, which included a lot of, you know, assisted living facility developers, as well as, you know, private constituents in the unincorporated urban areas. So hopefully, some of them might be online or listening. And I just wanted to point out the the three areas, and I will get into the parking and the amendment and how that can maybe help with the parking situation. First of all, kudos on grazing the affordable housing density bonus and the just the bonus or the allowed density in general, up to that 60 dwelling units per acre. I think that's really going to allow for certain projects to pass their their feasibility studies essentially and get off the ground. Absolutely, the parking issue is a very important one. It's it's a trade-off analysis. And I think that staff did a lot of work analyzing data from around our region, around other regions that are comparable to the greater Portland area. I want to point out that these parking reductions are only for the residential component of a mixed-use area. The commercial parking requirements remain exactly the same. So for residential, this is a trade-off of encouraging more housing, more dwelling units, some of which will and can become affordable subsidized units, some of which can be market rate depending on the site and the developer business model. And those, the commercial, if it's a mixed-use development, the commercial parking requirements remain exactly the same as they are now. So this is really a more of a philosophical values analysis of, do we want to support a small reduction in parking, point two, five for each dwelling unit category reduction in order to incentivize more housing? And you do have the option to later, you know, three, five, seven years from now, come back, or whoever, you know, is here, come back.
Continue, continue.
And
Just don't do that.
And and make changes, right? That's your authority as as a board, right, to do that if things are not working out well. But what we do know is that no mixed use, no additional housing is being built currently. And so these are incremental steps that can be taken to encourage and see if it moves the needle on getting housing off the ground. So the last strategy, which is the mixed-use density, 20% density allowance, if you develop commercial with housing, is the one that I really want to focus on. So we strongly encourage the board to approve the amendment that the Planning Commission approved eight to zero to allow for that flexible siting of commercial anywhere on the site in in conjunction with residential, right? Before, it was your code had it, or your code currently has it where the commercial has to be on the bottom floor with residential above, which works well if you have, for example, a vertical housing development zone tax abatement. But not having that, having the developer be able to be to flexibly cite El Cafe on the third floor or a rooftop bar in conjunction with with residential in the same building, or like staff gave the example of a coffee, a drive-through coffee hut somewhere else on the development site that's not the bottom floor of a residential, otherwise residential structure, can really help, I think, with with the parking concerns. Because if you're allowed to put your commercial anywhere on the site to best utilize how people are going to use the site, then you can cite that parking where it's most appropriate, rather than, you know, just having it be, well, we're forced into this parking situation right here because we can only put residential on the ground floor of, I'm sorry, commercial on the ground floor of residential. So I just want to just acknowledge that these are the trade-off discussions of housing and parking, and encourage you to pass all three. I understand if the parking is not, if you're not quite there with that, but we would support that incremental reduction in the parking. So with that, I will turn it back over. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Roseanne. I appreciate coming forward. Mary, how many online are there who wish to testify?
Chair, we have 17 in the room. Right now, I've got four who've indicated that they would like to speak.
Four?
Yes.
Yeah, please bring them on.
Yes. So up first, we will hear from Ed Gronky. Ed, if you could please unmute yourself. Please state your name for the record, please, and your area of residence.
Good morning, Chair Smith. I'm, I'm the, my name is Ed Gronky. I live in the Jennings Lodge area, and I'm the acting chair of the Jennings Lodge Community Planning Organization. Both Commissioner Shaw and Commissioner Savis were at our meeting the other night. Are you having trouble hearing me?
No, go ahead, Ed. Thank you very much for coming on.
Okay. I saw you waving your hand. I wasn't quite
We're just communicating. Just ignore us, and you go ahead.
The 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 discussion, this ZDO generated a great deal of discussion at our meeting. I think the only item that concerned our membership was the matter of parking. And although I know you have a letter from me on this, one suggestion was made that is not in that letter that might help to to answer this problem. One of the members suggested, why not looking, why not look at shared parking? If there is parking available at another establishment in the area, which could be made available per contract with the developer to handle the excess parking from a particular development, that might solve the problem. Most of the concern in the CPO had to do with the spill over to the neighborhoods. Anything that could stop the spill over to the neighborhoods, I know would be, would be acceptable to our community planning organization. Thank you.
Are you finished, Mr. Gronky?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Mary, who's up next?
Yes, Chair, we're going to start with Cassie Wilson. Cassie, please unmute yourself. And again, please state your name for the record and provide your area of residence.
Good morning, Chair Smith and Commissioners. My name is Cassie Wilson, and I live in Boring. I'm really glad that these zoning code amendments are being considered, and I hope you will fully support them. Something I've been thinking about a lot is climate migration. I'm 23 years old, and when I think about where I want to live in the future, it's no longer about where I'd like to live. It's about where it's safest to live with regard to climate disasters. And nowhere's really safe anymore, but I imagine I'll be living in a more urban part of the county to be further from wildfire danger. And it's not just young people deciding where to call home. It'll be moving based on the climate. It's people both here and in other states and countries whose entire communities will be destroyed by fires, excuse me, fires, floods, hurricanes, tornadoes, and rising sea levels, and have to find somewhere new to call home. We need to have an abundant supply of housing for our current and future neighbors. While I am terrified of the impacts of climate change, I also have a lot of hope and excitement for what our communities could look like in the future, and that's directly impacted by the choices being made now. When I envision the future of Clackamas County, I picture more complete neighborhoods. I'd love to live somewhere where the places I need to go can be accessed via walking, rolling, biking, or transit. I picture more parks instead of more parking lots. I imagine more housing options being available and affordable so my generation doesn't have to split rent among three or more roommates. We should be doing everything we can to allow increased density and to incentivize the development of housing for all and of mixed-use buildings. It unfortunately seems the most controversial part of all of this is the amendment to reduce the minimum parking requirements for multifamily housing. I know it may be hard for people in our county to fathom, but there are other ways to get around besides driving. Not everyone drives. Not everyone wants to drive or physically can drive or owns a car. And as someone who receives an income of just $529 a month on SSI, if I could live somewhere affordable with nearby transit, I wouldn't have a car because it's a huge expense. Reducing parking minimums will make housing more affordable, and increasing density will make it easier and smarter to invest in increased transit availability and frequency, as well as walking and biking infrastructure. These are things that should be celebrated because they'll make our communities more age-friendly, more disability-friendly, and more climate-friendly. I hope you will join me in supporting all three zoning code amendments. I mean this in the most respectful way possible when I say that the impacts of these decisions will far outlive anyone here, and we need to get our housing situation into the best position possible for future generations that will be even more impacted by climate migration and the housing crisis. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy Wilson. And Commissioner Savis has a comment.
Yeah, Cassie, if you could stay on, I'd really, I got a question for you. And first, I want to just say thank you for your advocacy in a number of areas. I listen to you intently in different forums, on different topics, and I appreciate, again, your advocacy. One thing I was hoping you would say today, and maybe you can help address that. I know that you have a keen interest and knowledge about access for those with disabilities. Can you speak to my earlier comments with regards to, you know, walkability sidewalk, some of the, some of the bare-bones stuff? I know that developers have a responsibility to implement that, you know, on their, on the streets and nearby, I mean, directly nearby. But getting to a service, or getting to transit, or getting all those things, I know that there are, there are challenges. Could you just speak to that, please?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I think that, to me, these zoning code amendments also need to go hand-in-hand for working on getting the transit development plan put into place and working on fixing those issues, too. To me, it's not like an either-or situation. I think we really need both. I mean, if it were up to me, I would completely get rid of parking minimums, but I think this reduction makes a lot of sense. And I think that, yeah, along with it, we do need to And I think that, yeah, along with it, we do need to invest in sidewalks and bike lanes and transit, yeah.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much. Mary, who's up next?
Yes, we have John Seiling. John, if you could please unmute yourself and state your name to the record and your area of residence.
Who is it?
John Seiling.
How do you spell it?
S.I.E.L.I.N.G.
It's actually pronounced Seeling.
Thank you, John.
No worries. Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to address this crucial issue. My name is John Seeling. I am a Realtor with Keller Williams. I live in Gresham, and it is my business to help people find homes in Clackamas County. I'd like to read an excerpt from a recent National Association of Realtors report and then offer some thoughts in support of all three amendments. Quote, "First-time buyers are continuing to struggle in this market and are pushing rental rates higher as they give up on buying. The share of first-time buyers in July of 2020 was 30%, down from 31% in June and 34% in July 2020. Housing shortages across this region are at crisis levels. We must urgently prioritize underserved communities and first-time buyers. That means more housing for people at lower price points, more affordable townhomes, more condos, and more apartments. To do this, developers must be given incentives to build these types of housing profitably or they will move on to other markets. They won't wait. Many have already departed. Through your support of these code changes, you have a chance to create inclusive communities through human scale and shared space development that higher density accommodates. More housed people means more stable living situations, more employed people, more people going to school, more taxpayers, and fewer people living on the street. These changes are the low-hanging fruit of housing development. Some communities don't have these opportunities. Your approval of all three amendments is a bold and necessary step forward. Thank you for your time."
Thank you, John. Who's up next, Mary?
Chair, we have Tyler King online with us. Tyler, could you please unmute yourself? Please say your name for the record and your area of residence. Tyler, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Hi, my name's Tyler King and I'm a member of PMAR, a Realtor with Windermere Realty Trust, and I am an unincorporated Clackamas County resident. I live on Aldercrest Road in the Oak Grove area. I'm not speaking on behalf of PMAR or Windermere Realty Trust, rather, these are my own personal remarks as a real estate professional and Clackamas County resident. I strongly support all three proposed amendments relating to increasing affordable housing density bonuses, reducing minimum parking requirements, and increasing the amount of housing allowed in certain commercial zones. The biggest issue facing the housing market today in Clackamas County is affordability. Market-wide, in Clackamas County, prices have skyrocketed nearly 18% in the same time last year. In urban, unincorporated Clackamas County, where 70% of the housing stock is the most expensive form of housing, just single-family homes, that first rung on the property ladder can be an uphill battle for many buyers, especially first-time homebuyers. Along those same lines, folks that are aging out of their homes have limited options if they want to stay in Clackamas County in terms of downsizing and aging in place. Increasing the number of housing types available to buyers would greatly affect affordability and create more housing options for a wide array of homebuyers. Looking at July of this year, the median single-family home in Clackamas County was $707,000 based on 638 sales. This is well out of reach of most first-time homebuyers. Now contrast this to the average price of a condominium or townhouse at 368,000, there was only 36 sales, and you can see that this is a housing type that the county should be encouraging. I'm often asked, who can afford these 700, 800, 900,000-dollar homes? My answer is, it's the folks that purchased 200, 300, and 400,000 homes five to 10 years ago. This is the property ladder at work. But how can this be achieved? By making development flexible and feasible. Forcing private developers to provide certain amenities such as parking, which eats up lots of space and lots of the budget, reduces the feasibility of larger-scale condominium projects. Additionally, the only way a developer will take advantage of an affordability bonus is if it pencils. This amendment moves us, it moves us in the right direction where the bonuses incentivize developers to actually build more units. 95% of all homeowners in urban, unincorporated Clackamas County live in single-family homes. It will only get more difficult for first-time homebuyers to get on that first rung of the property ladder and more difficult for downsizers and empty nesters to stay in Clackamas County until the county uses the tools at its disposal to encourage more housing types and thus making the county more affordable to a wide range of buyers. Flexibility leads to feasibility and hopefully more housing options for future Clackamas County residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's up next?
Chair, we have Thelma Hagenmiller. Get Thelma on the line. Thelma, please unmute yourself. Please state your name for the record and your area of residence.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good morning, Chair Smith and Commissioners. My name is Thelma Hagenmiller. I reside in the Oak Grove area of Clackamas County. Before the urban growth boundary was established, I sat in on a focus group about densification that Metro was holding in the Oak Grove area. I had a chance during that session to make a statement, and it went like this. A scientific experiment was done by one of the well-known colleges in this country. A large, open box was built with a maze inside of it. Inside the box were placed several rats. Also placed inside the box was a plentiful amount of cheese, so the rats never had to worry about being hungry. After a period of time of observing what the rats were doing, they added another rat to the box. They also added more cheese, so the rats never were lacking for food. Each day, they would add another rat and more cheese, but the size of the box remained the same. As the amount of individual space diminished, they found that the rats started eating each other. That is what we are seeing in our region since the urban growth boundary was established. What you are trying to do today just exasperates the lack of space. The other thing I would like to address is the reduction in parking in the ZDO. I live in, on an R-10 piece of property that is a budding MR-1 property. The MR-1 property has 75 Section 8 apartment units on it. As required, each of these two apartment complexes have large parking lots associated with them. Recently, I heard Jennifer Hughes state that staff had gone into neighborhoods to check on the existing parking issues and found very little problems. If you came to my area to check on parking issues on a weekday, you would not find an issue. Because of the amount of vandalism taking place on company parking lots, the employees are taking their work vehicles home. Most of these residents also have personal vehicles as well. Come in the evening or on a weekend and you would not be able to park in front of my house, and I live a block and a half away from the apartment complexes. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Who's up next?
Chair, we have Grover Bornfeld. Grover, please unmute yourself. Please state your name for the record and your area of residence.
Certainly. My name is Grover Jeffrey Bornfeld and I am a 30-year resident of Jennings Lodge. I also participated in the Jennings Lodge CPO. And thank you, Commissioner Savis and Commissioner Scholl for attending, and thank you, Ed, for officiating. It was a great discussion that we had, and it really did express the concern that our neighbors have for having more affordable housing, but at the same time, not at the expense of sacrificing the already lacking sufficient urban services, which is addressed specifically in House Bill 2001. And I so appreciate Commissioner Savis's comments today as well as the woman from the Building Association and then Cassie Wilson. We need to look at the bigger picture. Transportation is a problem. We do not live in a flat area where it's easy to walk. The sidewalks are not complete, and yet this is being looked at as an isolated piece. So I'm very much in favor of the measures. Even the parking issue, I could live with if we addressed the bigger issues. But to take it piecemeal, we will continue to neglect the things that have been neglected: walkability, open space, parks, and then fully transportation and mass transit. We don't have that around here. When we go somewhere, like we're going to fly, we can't take transportation. It more than doubles the amount of time it takes to get somewhere. So we need to look at a broader picture. And I love the addition that was put in by the Planning Commission about metrics. I highly recommend that. And I also appreciate what they talked about from the Builders Association to review that at five or 10 years downstream and see what adjustments are necessary and what kind of progress we've made. So for that, again, I thank you all for listening. It's been a great pleasure over these last many years working with the Porter County Commissioners, and I look forward to you hearing us and responding to the needs of the mass majority of the population that you oversee. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Grover. Up next, Mary?
Chair, I don't have anybody else out there, but let's just make one more call. Are there any attendees who would like to speak? Please raise your hand now.
Okay, I'm going to make some statements. Before we continue, we're going to consider the first motion. I have spent a lot of time thinking about this, and these are my statements. Increased housing bonuses on mixed use does not address the parking pressure on commercial businesses. Okay? Do I need to say that again? Okay. Number two. I am concerned that we are solely concentrating on one area that is magnanimous. I think staff has done an excellent job coming forward with a proposal that addresses our affordable housing shortage in the county. I've heard from the attendees who testified who say this takes pressure off people trying to buy single-family residences. I solely, I wholeheartedly agree with that. But we cannot solely concentrate on one area only to ignore another, and that is the law of unanticipated consequences. And this board has a very important decision to make about that. Number three. We have adeptly dealt with the issue at hand today. Today's issue, that is affordable housing. But what does the future look like? What does business parking look like? What does overflow parking look like into the adjoining neighborhoods where staff, you know those people will go? This is Clackamas County. This is not Hawthorne Boulevard in Portland. This is not Selwood. People come to Clackamas County for livability. I don't believe the livability quotient has been addressed in our zeal to provide affordable housing units. I have much angst about it. I love the amendment from the Planning Commission on citing commercial businesses in different places. That was really, really good. I do appreciate that. So I am going to make some recommendations today to my fellow commissioners, and anybody can chime in. I think much of this proposal needs more work, but I'm fully in support of number one. I will entertain a motion and further discussion on number one.
I move. We approve the portion of ZDO 277 to increase the density bonus for affordable housing proposals as recommended by the Planning Commission and staff.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Scholl to approve number one and seconded by Commissioner Fisher. Further discussion, Paul, you're up.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I appreciate all the hard work and the efforts and all of the skill sets that everyone's brought to the table, their experiences and their knowledge. And we are in a housing crisis. We're here today as a result of all those efforts and the passion to bring affordable units in this housing crisis, to help all those, those that are houseless, those that are on the verge of houselessness, all of that. So there's no, there's, it's very clear why we're here and why we're considering this. I've been a big advocate of, you know, looking and taking a hard look at how to prevent things, just like displacement, whether it's displacement of residences, whether it's displacement of a person from living in their home today to out on the sidewalk, or whether it's displacement of a business that has to move or relocate or shut down entirely because of a number of factors, which we'll talk about a little bit later. So in my 15 years of, 15 years of really taking a deep look at this, I'm more than happy to support this element today and look forward to the discussion on the other two items.
Thank you, Commissioner Savis. Any other discussion from our Commissioners today?
No.
Okay, hearing none. Mary, let's take a poll on the motion on the table.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Chair Smith?
Aye, motion passes for zero. Now, let's consider the recommendation to the parking, the minimum parking requirements for multifamily housing, and this is not the commercial housing. That will be number three. I will entertain some more discussion on that before a motion is made or not. Any Commissioner, Commissioner Scholl, you're up.
We, we need to consider some reduction in required parking for multifamily projects in order to encourage developers to begin building out these projects of increased density that we need very much. But I'm not concerned, I'm not convinced today that the Planning Commission's recommendations on those reductions are, well, I'm going to just say I'm not comfortable with it today. And we need a little bit more consideration on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Scholl. Commissioner Fisher, you're up.
Yeah, thank you, Chair Smith. This has been a long time in the making with lots of involvement and input from folks. And I would say that I am in support of staff's recommendation. I'm also in support of really analyzing the metrics in time. I think that's, critical government should do that always. I really, we, I really value listening to the home builders, the Realtors, the community, people that are really engaged. We need to incentivize development, and this is what has been worked on for many, many years. So I'm okay moving forward with this, with the amendment of the, of the metrics. I don't think we should wait. I think we are in a housing crisis, and we have to really lean in and listen to those that are doing the work and the building and the development. And this is what they're saying we need. I'm very persuaded by the, I can't remember the name now, but the Clackamas County resident who's also a Realtor, just going through the realities of what we're dealing with. I'm ready to move forward with this. I prefer that we're all comfortable, but I'm ready to move forward. And you know, one thing, I have the experience, we always, our decisions are based somewhat on our personal experiences. My son moved to Oahu and I went to visit him, and I said, well, Nathan, do I rent a car? Do I not rent a car? And he goes, Mom, you could rent a car, but you're really going to walk everywhere because you know what? There isn't really any place to park. And if you need to take the bus, he goes, I find myself taking the bus. He has a car, but he doesn't use it because there isn't any place to park. So people adjust to what the reality is. I do think that if we're moving in this direction, we have to be very mindful, and we have been very mindful about our planning for transit. The plan that we looked at addresses these issues. We are moving in a new direction as a bigger-picture community because we need better access to get people around that isn't totally car-dependent. Having, what do you call them, Paul? Is it called? Having, what do you call them, Paul? Is it called a jitney? What is it called, going into the neighborhoods?
Jitney, circulators, shuttles.
Picking people up, getting them to sites like light rail or bus, bus lines to get them to places, thinking more creatively, really moving in those directions. You know, we need to incentivize development, and we need to be creative about everything else. And that work is being done simultaneously. So I'm good with moving forward. I would like to see my commissioners join me in that.
Thank you, Commissioner Fisher. You've made some very poignant statements, I believe. Commissioner Savas, you're up.
Yeah, thank you. I'm not, similar to Commissioner Fisher, I'm not interested in waiting, but I'm also going to be very thoughtful, and I think we could use, do some work on this. So I don't want this to just stall off and have no action. So I'm, I've got some suggestions and some requests to make on this one in particular, so we, so we can move forward at some point in time. I don't think we're, we're quite ready. But I think we have to factor everything. I'm a big believer in quality of life for everyone, and the people that are impacted are not only the residents on these developments, but it's also the residents and the businesses nearby. We've got to, that's who we serve. And I, we can't ignore that. And that's why I literally have gone door to door and talked to people in these areas so I could be thoroughly knowledgeable about what we're doing and looking for ways to make all this happen. Thank you, Commissioner Fisher, for raising the local, the jitneys, local circulators. I sat on my first transportation committee in 1999. The community that, that, I think it was Mr. King who lived on Aldercrest Road, that community where I live also in that area, has been asking for a local shuttle, a jitney, for over 20 years. Hasn't showed up. That community's been asking for sidewalks in their neighborhoods. We've made some progress in that area. Granted, we're, but there's so limited resources, we're not quite there, and we're putting them where it needs it the most, but we're still have a long way to go. That's government's responsibility I spoke to earlier. And it's unfortunate because the, part of the reason that, that people are being displaced, part of the reasons is driving housing prices up, is because people are, are driving, or not dri, I don't want to use that word, are motivated to access their style of life, transportation needs, and where you look, where there's great transportation, the highs, the housing costs are the highest. If, if that basic service was available everywhere, it levels the playing field and it reduces that spike if we had let, there's a whole bunch of factors in displacement. Businesses where some of these TODs are that are on the lower floor or any of the floors, they need, it's not just curb appeal, but they need, they need the parking. And so where you see some of these mixes and talking some of the businesses, you know, column exit reviews when they were in there closing their doors and say, I tried, but the parking got absorbed, not by my customers, but the local residents and the local needs, and, and no one, their customers couldn't stop there. There was no place to park. So you have all these different factors, and I, I suppose I think my earlier comments were about how do we, how do we look on this, look, look at these on a case-by-case scenario and allow, like what we did at the Fuller Road TriMet Stop area for that housing development, or two housing developments, one's completed, one's underway. So I'm all, I'm very supportive of conceptually incenting these areas, but also being very mindful of the people we serve. Transit and those basic elements of sidewalks, we just, it's our fault. It's government's fault in general that we haven't really provided that where it's needed. And if we're waiting 20 years, still 20 years later, we still haven't got a local circulator, it's hard, hard to look anyone in the eye and say we did the right thing.
By circulator, you mean shuttle?
Pardon?
By circulator, you mean?
Shuttle, circulator, jitney. Yeah, yeah. As an example, and of course, they need, you need sidewalks for them to responsibly pull over to safe, to safely load people. If you live, I know a number of people that live on Aldercrest Road, for example, good luck if you're disabled and you want to get to, get to where services are, good luck. I mean, it's extremely dangerous. It's very well, they're not very well lit, and there's a lot of areas like that. So I, I, so my question for staff is, what mechanisms can we do, or we, or we can look at this on a case-by-case and make those allowances, parking reduction requirements to incent those developments and be mindful of the services in play?
So let's remember what we're doing here, Paul. Good question. I want that answered. I want staff to answer that. Additionally, this is for 80% of the median income level is what we're concerning in number two?
This is the parking.
There's, there's three parts to the parking changes in number two. One is just a small reduction overall for any multifamily development by .25 spaces per unit. The second part is a 20% reduction on top of that for units at 60% or below of median income, 60% of median income or below. And then there's also an option for a 40% reduction, not on top of the 20%, but on top of the regular ratio.
Okay, this is what I'd like to see, on this particular one. On housing developments that are not within the affordable housing metric, I think the parking is way too restrictive. I think the lower parking allowances on housing that does not have a, an affordable housing component to it is way too restrictive. Now, this is what's going to happen, because I've been there. You know, they're going to start parking down the streets. People will walk two and three blocks away to get a parking place. And so the people who own those houses on the streets, they own clear up to the curb. The government says, yeah, it's our right of way, and you have to build the new sidewalk. If you have a tree root coming up through your sidewalk, you have to build that sidewalk and be ADA compatible, because I've had to do it, okay, in, in a commercial building I owned. And so the people who, like Paul says, who already have established residences in these areas are going to feel the pressure. And I guess what's at issue is these zodiac ordinances, we, we can't monitor people's behavior. It's, it's going to happen. I know that. But I think it, when we go forward, we need to be mindful. We need to somehow mitigate the pressure that goes out into our well-established neighborhoods. And we had several realtors call up, and, and I agree with them. I totally agree with them. But in our zeal to hurry him past something that I'm going to have a lot of angst about for a long time, I think we need some more work on it because we have, and like Martha, you said, we have lumped all of the housing areas into one parking metric as I see it. I think we need to go back, and I think we need to redo that on this particular ordinance. And I'm not against it. We have a date for November 3rd that we can revisit this. And maybe to Paul's, to Paul's suggestion, look at a shuttle. I don't know where there's money for that. That's really an interesting concept. But think outside the box. The Planning Commission came up with a good recommendation on that. So I'm have, I would like to see this tweaked somewhat before we bring it first, further. Commissioner Fisher, your hand is up.
Yeah, just a question. The maps that we have along the McLaughlin corridor and then in the area around Clackamas Town Center, which are the red in the map that we look at, that are the areas that we're targeting, I know there's challenges down McLaughlin after you get past the light rail of Park Avenue, but there is pretty good public transportation around the Clackamas Town Center with the light rail there. And just from my experience of, would it be possible to have these tied to areas where there is public transportation for developer, like just put some qualifications on it? And it could kind of maybe potentially be elastic as we work better implementing our transportation plan and have more options are available than the parking requirements. It could be just somewhat elastic.
Yeah, Martha, I think I can answer that for you.
So there are a number of, of options that would potentially relate to that and to other things that I've heard. So currently, there is in the proposal a reduction specifically tied to proximity to light rail stations. There's nothing in there related to any other types of transit. We could add something like that on frequent bus lines, for example, that Karen was talking about. We could certainly write code to that effect. I hesitate a little bit to write it within a specific proximity of a bus stop because those sometimes tend to move. But if it's along a specific frequent bus line, I suppose, those also can change in the future. You run that risk. But we could do something like that, certainly. We could, if we are going back to amend the proposal, I would ask respectfully that we get a little direction on what exactly we're amending. We could not change the parking ratio just overall for market rate multifamily development, which I think is kind of something I might be hearing. That's certainly one option, and keep the rest of the proposal the way it is. We could not change the parking ratio for market, market family, market family, market rate multifamily housing at all. We could introduce an option that we had previously talked about at some policy sessions where it's not just an automatic reduction allowed for affordable housing or within proximity of light rail, but it's reviewed through design review on a case-by-case basis, based on certain criteria that a developer would need to provide. And there would, of course, be a cap to the amount, or the, to the reduction that would be allowed under that scenario. We already have that language written. We could bring that back to you. So there are lots of options. We just would like, we need some direction specifically on what options you're interested in.
Well, you already have in this ordinance that if they're within a certain proximity of light rail, the housing allowance, that's fine with me. The housing allowance, or excuse me, the parking allowance is what, .25? Is that right? Am I remembering that right?
That's a 40% reduction.
I know that. Okay, if they're within how close to light rail?
Within a quarter mile walking distance.
That's fine with me. And Commissioner Fisher, that goes to, I think, your comment, if they're close to light rail, then, you know, the parking does not have to be, they don't have to have as many parking spaces, is what I'm trying to say. But what I'm trying to say is, in areas that are not close to light rail, that do not have the affordability metric applied to, I do not favor the reduction in parking because of what I said is going to happen. They're going to go out into the neighborhoods, and then we're going to have another problem on our hands. Commissioners, you know, why did you do this? This is going to happen. I mean, that, that's, and I say that we can't work so hard to solve the affordable housing problem without looking into the future of the unintended consequences, which are very real, I believe, in this case. Mr. Savas.
Yeah, well, thank you, Chair. So I think we have a fat, no, we have this wonderful opportunity to look at two areas in Clackamas County where there's a light rail station, one of which has no issue with parking, Fuller Road area, the green line, even at the town center. So if you look at all the stops in Clackamas County, there's no issue with parking. On the other hand, quite the contrary, where the orange line is, and I'm talking, of course, pre-COVID, from day one, the first business day, the first Monday that that light rail opened, we've had a parking challenge ever since. It's dramatic. And so I think theoretically, Chair, your points about light rail station and the reduction, I think are correct. And in practicality, we know where it works, and, you know, we have a great examples in Clackamas County where it works in one place and doesn't work in another. So there, there are dynamics, and that's, I think, that's why I was getting back in my earlier questions about the case-by-case. So what we do here should not be at the detriment of others. And I think your comments, Chair, about unanticipated or unintended, we know this already, so we can't even use those words here. We know that we can anticipate problems because we're experiencing them. We know that there are consequences. So there are almost intended consequences, but they're known consequences, right? It's not as though we didn't intend it, and I don't think our intent is to assume that we're just going to impose this and, and have a blind eye or a blind ear to all the concerns. So I think we're trying to get in the right place. So I would just, my question back to Martha is how, what mechanism, you know, can we bring, let's say, say it's November 3rd, but what can we work on, on options? Are there ways to, we can look on these on a case-by-case and give those allowances? I don't have a problem with the general reduction from the 1.5 or whatever it was to one, the .25% reduction. You know, I think that's not.
In what area, Paul?
In, in general, along the C3 area, in general. I think it's the areas where we're talking about greater reductions that are under 1 or 1.25 or 1.15 or 1. whatever those, I think those, those are the areas, the .6 and the .8. I think they're reasonable where there's adequate facilities and services. But I think we need to get some better definition of what those factors are, that staff, and maybe that could be brought back to us in, at the next hearing on what that would look like. And I'm totally open to any specific questions you would have to help guide the work that you would need to bring something back.
I think we can do that, Paul. I think that I'm going to request staff at this time. I, I've just vote counted. We don't have the votes to pass number two today. I'm going to request staff to bring back the suggestions we said today. If you are unclear what any of us are saying, I suggest you make an appointment individually with each commissioner and engage in a huge line of communication. And we will combine what we feel each commissioner needs in order to get comfortable with passing this. You know, I get it, you know, we're going to build this, and how, parking is going to be a mess. Whatever we do, parking is going to be a mess, but we need to somehow mitigate it in the areas I described. So we are not going to entertain this motion today. We're going to do some work on it. We have a hearing scheduled for November 3rd, in which I anticipate we should be able to move forward. I will now move on to number three, the third recommendation, to increase allowed housing density in certain commercial zones. I like this. I have always thought this should be something that's considered maybe more broadly in Clackamas County. However, parking for businesses is not addressed in this particular proposal that's put forward. And the answer from staff, and I appreciate it, it's up to the developer to decide whether they're going to do that. So anybody who's owned a business like I have, I've owned a commercial business on Main Street in Malala. I first had to build a 25-space parking lot, and that was not cheap. It's just not a matter of paving over. You have to do rainwater drain off, and you have to have a catch basin for all this. It was very expensive, but I did it. And then I had to build a second parking lot in the front. And then I had to replace sidewalks, not once, but twice. And then I sold my business a couple of years ago, and I drove by the other day, and those owners had to replace a third sidewalk. So where does it end for these businesses? I can appreciate that. But I am not willing to pass this ordinance, letting the builder decide what is appropriate at the time of construction for parking. And I have, Roseanne, I have asked that question of staff, and I have not got a suitable answer that I'm comfortable with on passing this measure forward. I think that we need to address it upfront, what type of businesses. Commissioner Savas, you and I talked about this. You had a business. There are some times that you can't even entertain your own clientele because of residential parking on the streets, which I've experienced. I've had people come into my parking lot, and we had Ed Grandfrie say, well, you know, to get around this, we can use the parking lot next door, which they did in my case. But then where do my customers park? And so this is a real issue. This is a real-life issue on business parking that needs to be addressed. Commissioner Savas, do you have any comments?
No, you just, you did remind me. I did run a business on McLaughlin Boulevard, the very area, the, the C3 zoning on McLaughlin for 25 years. And I'll tell you, there were parking wars, not just for myself, but all the local businesses. And I'll tell you, there were parking wars, not just for myself, but all the local businesses. It drove some of them out. And it was unfortunate. When you have, you know, a delivery truck, you know, it's going to drop off, or someone's going to pick a product up and pulls up with a large truck, good luck. I mean, it was, it was its own challenge. It almost all had to be orchestrated and cooperated to try to figure out, to carve out some areas. So, but yeah, when you have customers and they can't find a place to park, I watched them pull in and people look and they drive off and you never see them again. That is what I hear from a lot of businesses when they close down in some of these areas where there's not enough parking, you know. If you can't, and they do rely upon, so let me just, sorry for this.
Go ahead.
I'll be brief, as I can, is that, you know, the whole idea about the, the density and having a lot of what they call heat, which is really the population there that can serve the businesses and make everything vital, vibrant and be successful, it takes a certain amount of mass of people to make a business operate and be successful. And this density bonus does that. So you're bringing in one successful element that makes a business successful. However, some businesses, a hairdresser, for example, whatever it may be, coffee shop, when people want to stop, they need that convenience, you know. So sometimes whether it's, and I won't say drive-through, I'm not here promoting drive-through today, but, but it's really about that access to the other customer base that some of these businesses need or rely upon and access to them. Sometimes the basic essential need to park is something important. I mentioned the shuttle, a shuttle or the local jitney. That can actually help a business whereby the hairdresser, the resident that lives perhaps on Aldercrest can actually take the shuttle and get dropped off right in front of the hairdresser or the coffee shop. That is a benefit. There is, there's so many, this is so complex, but there are so many factors that can make these things work. And those basic elements can make or break really the bottom line of a business. And unfortunately, a lot of businesses fail or they can't afford the rents. And so it's really how we do this and keep employment, which we really haven't talked about today, keep employment in these areas. This is an employment, these are employment corridors. And we are going to be, the risk we have here is displacing a lot of businesses, perhaps, that might experience those cost increases or those parking, you know, if you're a neighboring business property and you have a high-density deal and there's no parking requirements that overflows into their, into the front of their building and so forth, which happens, I tell you, I experienced that. It's disastrous. It can be disastrous to a business and the employees that work there. And we all need, people need jobs and we need to have a vibrant economy. We have to factor, as a county commissioner, we all have to factor all of these things into these. And we do things by piecemeal. It's not that we want to do it. Our, our planners get this, you know, we know we want, we have to look at everything holistically and, and factor all these things in. And I just wish that, and we spent all weekend, Friday and, well, not all weekend, but Friday and Saturday with the C4 retreat, and our topic was transit and how we get more transit in Clackamas County. And the region is seeing most of that transit in Multnomah County, some in Washington County, but we're advocating constantly for more transit because it can help us, help everyone be more successful and help spread opportunities for more housing for the people that are, that need it. I like the fact that we have homeownership built into this. This is a huge factor as well. So there's a lot of good stuff in this, but that's why I want to continue to work on this parking thing. I don't want it to just brush it aside. We need to deal with it headfirst and come up with some viable solutions to where we can make this happen to better incent more affordable housing.
Well, say, Commissioner Savis, I would like some specific language in this that addresses the parking issues for commercial. And you make a good point, Commissioner Savis, employment lands. Not only do we have a business owner who drives to their place of business, we have one or two, maybe three employees who also drive. And where are they going to park? And then you add into that their customer base. And what kind of businesses are going to locate at a place where they need customers? I mean, it's astounding to me. We've really got to look at this in number three on, on the mixed-use development. Like I say, I love the idea, but we need to work through and pay attention, I think, to the issues that have been raised here and the issues of the people in the community. I don't see three votes on this board of commissioners to pass this one either today. I do appreciate Commissioner Fisher and your zeal, and I love your passion when it comes to affordable housing and taking care of those people who need the housing the most. But you know, November 3rd is not that far away, did I say that right, November 3rd? For us to really roll up our sleeves again on this one and visit the commissioners. If you are not clear, do not bring something back that has not been visited by commissioners. And this is not vote counting, when you meet with each individual commissioner to decide how to move forward. So I'm going to recommend that we not pass this one today. Nate, do you have any suggestions?
I, I do have some thoughts, just procedurally. I guess, before we move to that, do we want to spend any time here before we leave?
I can't hear you, Nate, I'm sorry.
Before we leave item three specifically, do we want to spend any time, or is there a desire to spend any time fleshing out specific concepts here in this forum? Or as you suggest, would you prefer to have that left to individual?
Well, I'm open to discussion. I'm open to any commissioner commenting on this. I'm open to staff to coming forward to figure out what we're thinking. Anybody who wants to comment, I can open up a public hearing to listen to more people if they want to make comments on parking in our commercial zones for businesses or any of this. I'm open to, we can go till 11:30. I recommend we do not go past 11:30 today. Martha Fritzi, you have one.
May I make a comment?
Yes, you may.
Thank you. So I'm happy to bring something else back. Again, I need a little more direction about specifically what that is. And as you were deliberating, I was sort of thinking, I think about numbers a lot, and I was trying to think about really what, what we are talking about. And so the way I see it, a commercial piece of property has the option, under, under the proposal to increase the, well, let's not even talk about it, has the option to develop all housing. And if they were to develop, for example, 100 dwelling units of multifamily housing, so let's say they were all two-bedroom units, which we know they're not going to be, but that would be 125 parking spaces under our current parking ratio that would have to go there. If they were to also develop 10,000 square foot, feet of commercial space, of restaurant space on that site, they would be required, restaurants, I believe, in case I'm mistaken, have to be parked at about 15 spaces per 1,000 square feet. That's another 150 parking spaces that would have to be on that site. If it's just retail, we're at closer to like four, four to, four spaces per 1,000 square feet of retail. And that's another 40 parking spaces that would have to be put on site. So I think what I'm hearing is the, is there's a concern that the people living in those 100 dwelling units wouldn't have enough parking with their 125 or 100 or 90 or whatever it ends up being, and that they would then be parking in that 40 or 50 or 60, however many spaces would be, would be required for the commercial uses on the same site? I think that's the concern that I'm hearing.
Yes.
And so I'm not entirely certain how a zoning code amendment could address that because in a situation like that, it happens now, where there is overflow parking for different types of businesses. There are sites that have a restaurant and another type of business, and they mark their parking for restaurant only, only for this XYZ business. And then that needs to be enforced. And we, through our zoning code, don't require the restaurant mark their spots. We don't identify on the ground which spots actually go to which business or building or to residents. I mean, it's, it may be easier to, to mark the residential versus commercial. And then it comes down to enforcement. And I think that's what Jennifer was getting to with her response, is that it comes down to whether or not a developer actually wants to provide more parking than that, which they certainly can, which we all know that they are not likely to, I get that. And then how it's, how it's marked and either shared or not shared, and what, you know, and, and what happens, what the enforcement of that is, none of which goes through our zoning code.
Well, okay, now wait a minute. Okay, now, that's, I'm going to comment on that. You say restaurants, parking spaces is 15 spaces per 1,000 square feet.
I believe so.
Okay. Well, if that's not in our zone, where is it? If it's not in our ZDOs, where is it?
That is in our ZDO. They are required to provide those. If, if a developer comes in and builds-
But then you say the developer is not likely to provide additional parking. That is my very issue that I'm trying to address here. I am not willing to have the developer determine how much parking is going to be available to businesses that aren't even sighted there, but yet they want businesses to come in. That's nonsensical to me. That is totally nonsensical to me because we have to be attractive to businesses. If a business wants to site in there, they're going to look at many things, not only the rent, the curb appeal, but they're going to have to say, gee, is there parking for my employees or customers? If there's not parking for the employees or customers, the business isn't going to cite there, and therefore we have taken away our wonderful area of commercial areas to cite businesses. That's my point I'm trying to make, Paul.
Yeah. Another, what, what I thought of, Martha, while you were speaking, is what if the, you know, however we do this, again, you guys are the experts, we're not, if they're, if they had to submit a parking plan in that mixed kind of development, right? And that would have to be either, that'd have to be designed into that, saying there's going to be signage, you know, towing if someone's violating that, so on and so forth. I do know that businesses have, have gone so far in some areas or developments where parking, you have to pay for the parking there, but if you're a customer, you get a waiver. You get, you know, it's discounted from your, so you go into the business, you're, you're a patron, you know, that, that, that parking charge is, is waived or reduced. And, you know, and that assures that people aren't going to abuse the parking if they're local residents nearby. So maybe it's a parking plan that's required. I, I don't know. I'm just throwing ideas on the wall here to see what could, what could help, help you all, you know, help solve this, solve this problem. We can't obviously impose parking requirements on a private property. I, I realize that. That's really, it'd be something that can be part of the development, maybe, to help ensure that there is that, and the other thing I wanted to say is that the economics is if you're a business and you, and you choose to locate there, you know, that's their risk. That's, that's the risk is if they don't, if they turn out that they don't have the adequate parking, then they, they leave. But that's at the detriment of the development itself because they don't receive the revenue from the rents if, if, if no one's a taker. And we have, in Clackamas County, some TOD styled, the former chair of this commission, Mr. Bernard, hit the development on his former property, there's a lot of vacancies in those little first-level commercial spots there. So I, and that could be the, that could be the price, it could be the parking. There's also parking challenges in that area, by the way, too. That's another one where the light rail stays. So it's, there's, there are challenges, but maybe that's a factor, is having a parking plan. And then on a case-by-case basis, that can be analyzed on certain criteria and approved or not.
That's a good idea. It's a good idea. This is our opportunity. I don't want to have to revisit and fix this next year or the year after. Now is our, and I don't want to have appeals. I mean, I don't know if they can appeal. Anybody can appeal anything. I don't want to have to deal with this through a land use decision that so-and-so has appealed that goes to a land use officer. Land use officer makes a really non, it goes to LCDC, then it comes back here. I don't want to have to do that. I'm trying to look to the future on this, to be as reasonable and accommodating, because after all, folks, this is a commercial zone that's so sought after in Clackamas County. And any other questions from staff before we recess today? Any other comments from commissioners?
Just one, Chair. I like your idea about staff maybe meeting with us individually, but if they feel maybe having a work session between now and then would be helpful.
I wouldn't mind a work session. Let's do that, Paul. I was thinking about that. Let's meet with staff individually, meet with me after you've met with the other commissioners, Nate Moterman.
So in, in this case, a work session would be roughly equivalent of just continuing the hearing.
Was that right?
Well, it, it depends on how you want to structure this. This is a legislative adoption, and so you can take public testimony, you can continue the hearing for discussion deliberation.
Can we have a hearing for deliberation only?
You can. You may want to consider then reopening the hearing after you have settled on a proposal. But that's up to you.
In the future.
I want to keep the November 6 hearing date for final approval.
November 3.
The work needs to be done before then because I do not want to delay, like Commissioner Fisher has said. Somehow, Nate Moterman, figure out a mechanism for us to move forward on.
The question becomes, how much work do you want to do in advance of that?
Well, we're going to have amendments. We're going to have amendments on this and it needs to be for discussion.
And I think that puts our, staff is going to have to put together, unfortunately, the, I guess, the ideas about how we do this. Maybe you guys can come back to us so, and figure out how you want to solicit our ideas and some of your, and some of your ideas back to us. So I'm open to any of that. And the other question I have is how do we end this session to accommodate all of that today?
Yeah. Can I have just a minute?
You bet. We'll just stand down for a moment. Commissioners, get a cup of coffee, get a little glass of water.
You know, just one sidebar, Ned, is that, you know, good to remember, as staff presented earlier, the planning commission was so much split over this 5-3 on this parking one specifically. So this is not an easy task, so.
And I understand the planning commission passing it forward for the commissioners. And I think probably all of the items that we have discussed today were discussed by the planning commission and may, maybe more in depth. And I'm going to put it out there that if any members of the planning commission want to reach out and maybe give us some ideas or the discussions that they've had, I would appreciate that as well. Nate, do you want to say something?
Yeah. So i, if the desire is to keep the November 3 hearing date, what we can do is to try and aggregate the thoughts that we've heard here, set time to meet with commissioners individually. What we could then do is try and divine as best we can, you know, where options or consensus may be forming. Because in advance of the November 3 hearing, we would publish a staff report that includes all those options, so the public would have a chance to review that. And then at that November 3 hearing, the, what I'd need to know from you is whether you would want to entertain public testimony on the proposals in that staff report, or if you want to reserve that for discussion deliberation.
What is the time requirement to publish a staff report before the hearing?
We do that a week before.
A week?
A week before the hearing.
Is that seven days or five days?
Well-
Seven.
Seven.
Do we, do we get it on seven days? Yeah, I, I mean-
Does Saturday and Sunday count within the seven days? Okay, so it's seven days for the staff report. Okay, so that moves up our date. So we're going to have to get busy on this.
But that would give us enough time to keep that November 3 hearing.
Go ahead, Paul.
One other thought, and I know it's not related to this specifically because this is specifically property that's on the C3 corridor, but if you look at the, and maybe it affects others as well, neighboring properties at C3 or in the residential. But, you know, one thing I've experienced in some of these parking challenges around this county since I've been a county commissioner, is people, whether they're neighbors or businesses, appealing to me, say, "Commissioner, I've got a parking situation. How can you fix it? Apparently you don't have any parking code or parking ordinances, and it's legal for anyone to park their RV and leave it there for, you know, however long period of time." So I'm just wondering if a parking policy or ordinance in the county localizing these areas, I don't know how you do that, could help augment or reduce some of these pressures of parking, for, for example, parking in neighborhoods, you know, if there was some kind of a parking thing, you know, like cities do typically, that can help remediate some of these challenges we're facing with overflows.
Are you referring to something like what you see in Northwest Portland where it's permit parking or paid parking or something like that?
Yep, yep, yep. So if you're a resident, you know, you, you're permitted to park in front of your own home, for example, your own property. Whereas if you're, if you're, if it's not, you know, if you're not, you know, the resident, you're not permitted, you know. Something that gives some kind of control and that can be enforced without being a huge burden on, you know, the enforcing agency, whether it, in this case, the Sheriff's Department. I don't think they want, they have a lot of things on their plate. And I don't think parking is as urgent a need for, as some of the other factors are going on. So I just worry about that burden as well, but-
So I know very little about that, except it does exist in other places. And I would lean on Karen a little bit to, to maybe help understand the mechanism in which something like that would come about. It's not a zoning code amendment. And, I mean, maybe it's something that we can spend a little more time talking about when we come to you over the next six to eight months, when we're talking about implementation of House 2001, which affects single-family neighborhoods more.
And I guess-
Karen, go ahead.
I would just add that I think that what has already been wrought up with regards to a parking management plan and being able to understand how parking is managed, both in the commercial areas and residential areas, you know, we can bring more information to you about that, you know, over the next couple of weeks and when we're talking at the next time we come to you. But I think these things overlap, is what I'm trying to say.
Yep, agreed.
Oh, yes. I think they do. You're right on that. You're right on that. Okay, Nate, are we ready to adjourn?
Well, let's go ahead and have a motion. And so we-
A motion to do what?
To continue the hearing. So we need a motion to continue the hearing. And if you want to limit it in any way-
That's right. It's in my script. That's right. I forgot.
It is. But I want to, let's change the way that that motion is worded. Let me-
Okay. Just a moment, just a moment. Let me catch up with you. There, last page of my script here. And it says, Nate, why don't you just state what the motion should be?
Sure. It, it sounds like the desire is to have a motion to continue the matter until November 3, 2021 at 9:30 a.m., really for the limited purpose of discussion around the amendment to the minimum parking requirements and the increase in the allowed housing density in certain commercial zones.
So moved. Seconded.
The motion offered by Council Nate Boderman has been approved by, seconded by, Paul Savis, seconded by Commissioner Scholl. Any further discussion on that? Seeing none. Mary, would you please call the poll?
Commissioner Scholl?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Chair Smith?
Aye. Motion passes 4-0. Thank you very much for, commissioners for being very patient, and staff as well. We will have a very good work product, I know, when we're done with this. Thank you.